Alyssa.
You ready?
Oh, she's not really here. Do you want to tap Alyssa for me?
Yeah.
The minutes were high.
Are you going to be in force?
I read them. All good.
I would like to vise all those. I'd like to vise all those present that notice of this meeting has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, and that notice was published in the Jersey Journal, city website, copies provided to the record, North Star Ledger, and also placed on the bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall. Written objections, if any, shall be made to the city clerk.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For Emily.
Mr. Cohen.
Present.
Fisher. Mr. Jabour. Mr. President Zano.
Present.
DeCatero.
Present.
Mr. Ramos.
Present.
Mr. Russo.
Present.
President Doyle.
Present. Okay. Oh, for the two. Yeah, do we want to take care of the proclamation now is what I was asking.
I don't think, I think we can do it when it comes up in the agenda. I don't think there's someone here yet.
Okay. All right, so we're going to start with two presentations. RJ. So we're going to start with 800 Monroe, is that correct, RJ?
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to open for the presentation?
Motion to open.
It's a public hearing?
Public hearing for presentation.
For 800 Monroe Resiliency Park. Is there a second?
Begging.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Today.
Council President, on the city council agenda tonight, there are two items, both require a public hearing. Both are grant applications. One is for 800 Monroe and the other is for Tom Oliveri Park. RJ is going to go through 800 Monroe first. There are no changes to what anyone has seen prior to this. This is just the steps we have to take to apply for the grant.
Thank you, Dr. Freeman. So as you said, this is a grant application for 800 Monroe Resiliency Park. In 2024, the city applied successfully and received $500,000 for the construction of the recreational amenities at this park. And in 2025, we anticipate applying for an additional supplemental funding of $500,000. And so in order to meet the grant requirements, we are holding a public hearing and presentation to go over the concept plan. So this is the same exact concept plan that was approved in June 2024 by the city. To briefly go over, it's 800 Monroe Street site and lot on the western edge of the city of Hoboken. And so if you look on the southern end, which is the left, the program is comprised of a number of gardens and landscaping and seating areas for the tennis area. And so on the tennis, there's three different courts. Working further north in the center of the site, there's a fitness area. There's two dog runs, one for small dogs and one for large. And then there's a large central lawn and plaza area with a gathering bench. And then on the northern portion of the park would be a large gardening area. So as part of that grant application, we also completed environmental impacts assessment. This kind of goes through some of the details there, but the key findings are that this would bring much needed recreational amenities to the neighborhood and have no adverse effects on the area. With that, I'll turn it over to the council for a public hearing.
Good night, Council President.
Yes, Councilman Fisher.
Just can you go back to the design? Is, and maybe you started it. My apologies if I missed it in the beginning, but where is like the kids play area in this? Is there a kids play area in this plan?
There is not a playground. At the next presentation for Tom Oliveri Park, there is an inclusive playground included. There are, you see where the gathering benches, there are a number of sculptural play elements that would be, you know, kid focused in terms of activities for them.
So maybe I'll ask Councilman Russo because I know this is your ward. I mean, there's so much residential density in that area. Is it because it's so close to Seventh and Jackson that we don't need a playground?
Yeah, so when, if you don't mind, Council President, I'm sorry. When we talked about this, we talked about it in totality, right? So how this becomes almost a part of the plaza and the park on the other side of the plaza where it just becomes one big open space or one big recreation space. And that was really the concept for all of it, where just a block away, you have that toddler area, you know, you have a playground for children, you have the open field, you have the gym, and you have the plaza for more, you know, just passive recreation. We could do different festivals as we have. And then this gives us a little bit more active recreation with the tennis courts. And then the open area here is more like just again a passive kind of a place. But there is some active area if you look where the water feature is as well. That becomes an active area with the water feature.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
Are you, are you done, RJ?
Yeah, is there a public hearing? Any comments?
Yeah, we will, we'll, we'll see if the public has questions. If, anyone else in the council? All right, we'll. Okay.
Thank you, Council President. Can you describe the resiliency features in this park?
Sure. So as the concept plan was designed by AECOM, this park would store about 430,000 gallons of stormwater onsite. So it's similar to other resiliency parks. It's effectively, the soils would be capped and then you would build cisterns on top of it. And so the water that falls on the site would then be detained and then slowly fed out into our stormwater system.
So the cisterns would be similar to the North Resilient City Park?
Yes.
Where they would be onsite below the surface of the park?
Yes, yeah, exactly.
And then would there be above ground the resiliency features as well?
Yeah, so you can see some of the garden areas would be designed as rain gardens. So you would have the actual slowing effect of the water that would eventually reach those cisterns would go through the rain gardens themselves first.
Thank you.
Council President, just one more question. Are there restrooms in this plan?
There are not restrooms included in this park, but I think to Councilman Russo's point, the, the whole area as a whole has restroom access at the gym nearby. So that's why it wasn't included.
But the gym is not always open, so are there?
You also have the.
There are, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And just one other point, point there too, when it comes to parking in this, in this area, that bike lane is actually on the sidewalk. It's not in the street. So we're not losing any parking along that, along that street.
Do we have any requirements? Do we have any requirements to put restrooms in or no? I just, I'm remembering with Church Square Park, we had a requirement that in order to get a certain type of funding, it probably, I don't know if it was Green Acres, but that it had to have a certain type of like accessible bathrooms. We don't have that requirement here.
So the grant that we're getting for Green Acres here is an urban parks grant. The grant that you're thinking of is a Jake's Law grant. When it's an inclusive playground, it needs to have a restroom onsite. And that's why when we got that for Church Square Park, we included the portico. You'll see that same requirement applies to Tom Oliveri Park in the next presentation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I guess that we're done with the hearing. There's no vote on this until the resolution.
Right.
So. Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, and RJ, you're handling the second one as well, is that correct?
Motion to open the public hearing on the Tom Oliveri Park improvements project.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. So similarly, this is for a grant application to Green Acres. As I just mentioned, it's for a Jake's Law grant. So this is focused on funding playground improvements, and it's specifically for inclusive playground design. So in order to meet that, we have a number of requirements on specifications for the actual play structure as well as having restrooms onsite. And so quickly, Artiro had a contract to design the full park that was approved at December meeting. So what you're seeing now is a very preliminary concept design for the purposes of applying for the grant. There will be a comprehensive public outreach process for the full design. There's actually a public survey that's out right now that closes tomorrow for the public to comment on actually finalizing this. And so what you're seeing in this concept design is effectively a one for one replacement of the existing one with new and improved facilities. So on the bottom half of the park, you see an inclusive play structure as well as improved landscaping and seating areas. And then on the upper portion of it, you'll see an upgraded spray area. And so this is effectively the overarching scope of what the work will be. We'll come back to the council and the community with a more refined design as we go through the public process fully. And then so.
So on Ed, on this one, as opposed to 800 Monroe, you're saying the decisions have not yet been made whereas.
Correct. Yeah, so 800 Monroe, the city council has adopted.
We already approved that, yeah.
This one, in order to make sure we can apply for the grant, which is $750,000, we wanted to make sure we, you know, had a concept plan prepared to apply for it. But the ultimate design will be brought before the community and the city before we actually move forward with it.
And where did you say the bathrooms are in this one? The little red things?
So it's right here on the entrance, if you can see my cursor.
Yep.
So it'll be the same Portland Lou kind of structure that is being installed at Church Square Park as part of phase one from there. And then just similarly to the other one, the environmental impacts assessment for the, for the grant largely found that by redoing the play structure will actually increase the amount of inclusiveness for the park and there'll be additional recreational opportunities. There'll be no adverse impact. Open up for question.
Yeah. Councilman one?
Could I just ask a question? I don't know if it's better on this slide or the other one. One of the features about this park that I think tends to be challenging is the change in elevation relative to where the playground structure is. Do you anticipate that this design, because you mentioned this would be an inclusive design, I assume that means that would be leveled out, so there wouldn't be that step necessarily for accessibility purposes?
There are certain grade requirements so that it would be handicap accessible. And so I don't know off the top of my head what those exactly would be, but that is the intention, that it would be much more accessible than the current rating.
Stairs. Council President?
Yeah.
So we had, RJ, we're in the meeting where we were having this conversation with Director Gonzalez, but I think, I think this park is actually not that old. So if you haven't already, I would encourage you and the designers to reach out to Applied that built the original park. And they may, they may have more clarity on why there's, you know, the different elevation and actually like if there's something under it or whatever. But they should, they, I believe they're the ones who designed that park.
My guess may be that has to do with the root structures of the existing trees. That's one of the design challenges of the site, making sure that we can preserve the existing canopy. And so in my preliminary conversation with the design team, there may need to be elevation changes to make sure you don't affect those root structures.
Or, or just take the trees down and put a couple more new trees or something in.
There's, yeah.
But yeah, but it's still, it's still worth having the conversation with Applied, given that they built it.
Certainly.
The other thing, can I make a formal request to extend the survey one week?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Awesome.
Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Council President. One of the features of Tom Oliveri Park, which is what it's, who it's named after is Mr. Oliveri and the mural that's on the wall there. My understanding is that there's a portion of the mural that suffered some water damage. Is any part of this project, including the, either restoration rehabilitation of the mural, and I understand there's a portion that may not have been properly waterproof when it was originally painted. Are you aware of that or is that, is that being contemplated as part of this project? Yes, Council. It's not specifically part of this project. It is separate apartment to be used with, with the cultural affairs team is working on the rehab of making sure that that mural is restored to what it looked like when it was first painted using our bond, our arts trust account. And that's being done through the arts committee as opposed to through this project? Correct. Great, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? There are no members of the public signed up to speak. Motion to close?
Motion.
Public portion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Theofold. Have you got your?
He's not here yet, but that's public portion on agenda items.
Okay. Okay, so we'll start, we'll continue with the public portion comments on agenda items with regard to resolutions. And I should emphasize, I've been doing a bad job of keeping everyone to their five minutes, so I'm gonna try to do better and I ask you to cooperate along those lines. So that being said, I'm looking at, I have, I have someone who's signed up for an ordinance, number three, on a resolution sheet. So this, this public portion is for the resolutions on the agenda. If there are no ordinances for second reading tonight, ordinances on first reading, we don't do public comment, but there's a public portion at the end where people can speak. So Alexandra Black, you did identify ordinance number three, Batia Zumwalt, and Jill Singleton. Are, are you wishing to speak on resolutions or on the ordinances, the, for first reading? Okay, so you, we'll put you on the other list and everything will be fine. We'll hope we move along. So there's no one here except Mr. Rivera Soler. I don't know if you're signing up for resolutions or not. Okay, well, then if you, the sheet is.
I don't think he said that, Manny.
So Alyssa, could you put the names of the three people on the, onto the public portion so I don't forget? And you can give me the sheet for resolutions? Well, Mr. Manuel Rivera Soler?
Thank you, Council President. I'm appreciative of allowing me to speak this evening, even though I came tardy. I appreciate this agenda. It's kind of full, so I will be quick because the questions, as I said, the last meetings would always be why. Why are the different resolutions, especially the ones that have contracts, if you could explain them, because there's like 12 on, a couple of them on climate action and I believe in community development. So it would be just, you know, the questions would be, first of all, the amounts, are they always going to be the best that we can get? I always ask that very same question. I know that a lot of these resolutions are, as you would call it, or as the insiders would call it, housekeeping, meaning things that you have to do because you have to control or continue the departments having their necessary people in place to do the work and the operations that the city needs them to do. But the question is, why are there always these excessive amounts? Again, some of them are meritorious, but others are not. Again, I asked the question in regards to the people who get selected to the different boards and commissions. Again, many people who, who are interested always get looked over. Once again, there are members of the public that I know have applied. And, and I ask, and they never even get a response or, or thank you, but no thank you. Again, nothing against the people who are going to be selected this evening and voted on to them. A thank you because they heeded the call and accepted to serve in these different boards and commissions. Again, I want to thank you for whoever does the grants. But again, specifically, when you get a grant, can members of the public as well always know how that grant is going to be implemented? What exactly, or where exactly is it going to be put into use? Because many people always feel that they are not getting the full information. And again, with that, Council President, I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera Soler. There's nobody else signed up to speak? I don't have the sheet, but you, yeah, for resolutions, so.
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we'll go with the proclamation.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
So on the agenda this evening is a proclamation from Mayor Bala proclaiming January 27, 2025 as International Holocaust Remembrance Day in the city of Hoboken in memory of the victims of the Holocaust, in honor of the survivors, as well as the rescuers and the liberators, and further proclaiming that all citizens of Hoboken should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it exists. Council President, as a representative from the United Synagogue of Hoboken Board, David Hayfitz is here and wanted to say a few words about this.
All right, Mr. Mr. Hay, Hayken?
Thank you, Phil, and thank you, Council. David Hayfitz, Ward Five, Paul Cohen, and, and trustee of the United Synagogue of Hoboken. I, I wanted to thank the city tonight for this very important proclamation. I am a board member and longtime member of the United Synagogue of Hoboken, but the importance of holiday, of Holocaust remembrance is not a Jewish issue. It's not a national issue. It's not related to anything related for national politics that we all struggle with on a regular basis, or international politics for that matter. This, I respect and appreciate that the primary purpose of this council and the city government is to provide for the safety, security, and stability, economic and otherwise, for our community. And proclamations are secondary to that. But this, this particular proclamation speaks to something that's probably overrides and correlates all those topics, and that's humanity. And you both believe in the humanity of Hoboken. I believe in our, as a community that's welcoming to others. And the Holocaust, as I said, is not, it's a Jewish, it's not a Jewish thing. It's not a national thing. It's one of the greatest human tragedies that mankind has experienced. It's one of the greatest atrocities, unfortunately, of the past century. And it's brought about when there's not a good understanding and when we push each other's to points of, starting with bias, that becomes hatred, that turns into action that is irrevocable. I pray and know that it will never happen here, but it is something that has to be understood for all ethnicities, all religions, all people of all backgrounds. And like I said, it speaks to humanity. It speaks to what's great about Hoboken, that we can't make a proclamation for every community and every representative in the city. However, there are, in our community and the one I represent, in the United Synagogue of Hoboken, many, many, many descendants of Holocaust survivors, some who've, who's those last surviving Holocaust survivors have only recently passed away, one within the past year of our own, the own, our, the own president of our synagogue. So it's something that we should keep in our minds and again, maybe outside of the responsibility of the council and the city in terms of what you have to do to run the city, but importance for us in, in the strength of humanity and Hoboken being welcoming, accepting, and making sure we remember these kind of events. I only think that it's appropriate this week. I know that it's, it's next week is the actual, we just passed Martin Luther King Day. And I know although overstated, over, not overstated, but very well known and stated is Martin Luther, one of, I find one of his greatest quotes, that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And that's why we do it here, because we have to remember that injustice is occurring all places at all times, and it's our responsibility of individuals, whether it be in the council or as, or as just citizens, to stand up against hate, bias, bigotry, and everything that comes with it. And I appreciate this proclamation for that purpose.
If you could stay up, I think we'd like to present it and.
Sorry, I'm dressed as Hobo.
I'd also just like to read the whereas, because it's short and I think it's, it's also helpful and echoes what David said. Whereas January 27th marks the International Holocaust Remembrance Day, dedicated to the memory of the 6 million Jewish victims of the Holocaust and millions of others. And whereas the Holocaust remains one of the most horrific atrocities in human history, and it is imperative to honor victims, acknowledge the pain and suffering of survivors, and ensure future generations are educated about the dangers of hatred, to prevent such horror from occurring again. And whereas International Holocaust Remembrance Day condemns all forms of religious intolerance, incitement, harassment, or violence against persons or communities based on ethnic origin or religious belief throughout the world. And whereas Hoboken is a fair and welcoming city, and recognizes the importance of promoting tolerance, fostering mutual respect for all people, and remaining vigilant against hatred, persecution, and genocide. And whereas Hoboken and its residents are committed to combating hate, discrimination, and intolerance in all forms, while promoting human rights, dignity, and understanding, while working to make the city an even more inclusive and peaceful place for all. Now therefore I, Revender Espala, Mayor of the City of Hoboken, proclaim January 27, 2025 as International Holocaust Remembrance Day in the city of Hoboken, in memory of the victims of the Holocaust, in honor of the survivors, as well as the rescuers and liberators, and further proclaim that all citizens of Hoboken should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. Thanks.
All right, you ready?
Okay.
Yep, consent agenda. Anybody, for chance, have anything they'd like to pull? All right. T3 and T4 are being carried.
Council President, I got a message from the zoning officer about the ordinance on for first reading with the signs.
Yeah, that is being carried.
It's being carried, okay.
Yep, and the resolution to the planning board.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure I.
Yep.
She asked if I would make sure.
PD 11 is the ordinance at the end and number seven of the ordinances for first reading. So is there, is there something else?
Council President, I think CL3 is removed.
Which, what?
CL3?
That's not.
Oh, no, not, I'm sorry, not CL3. I take it back. My apologies.
Yeah, there's, I don't think any of the CLs are being removed.
Nope, yep, totally fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Questions on?
So, yes.
Just a comment on A4.
Okay.
CA2. CD6.
CD6?
CD6, yes.
That's what I got.
About the vouchers.
Yep.
It's just really a question related to vouchers. Quick, quick and easy.
That it?
I think that's all I had.
Anyone else?
Oh, and just a comment on communications as well, Council President.
Okay. Petitions and commu, okay, do you want to, all right, so Mr. Prina?
Wait, I got a couple.
Oh, all right, just said anyone else and nobody said anything?
I was just.
But I could sense you were thinking something.
Claims, A3, A4, I think A4 was said, CA9. CA12.
Yep.
And that does it for me.
Okay. Anyone else? Second, going one. So that's Mr. Prina, A3, A4, CA2, CA9, CA12, CD6. No problem. C, A3, A4, CA2, CA9, CA12, and CD6.
Uh, CL2 was, yeah, yeah.
CL2 was not mentioned, but it is now, okay?
I thought I did. I had it circled.
Okay.
I apologize.
No problem. You got the ones that have been?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So call a vote on the consent agenda, Mr. Prina?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, on everything. No on CD5.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
Mr. President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Yes, on everything except C D five. Okay.
On the claims?
Claims, Mr. President Zano?
Director Freeman, there was, uh, $50,000 for Red Leaf, um, I don't know, is Red Leaf is 50K? I'm guessing that has to go with the cyber stuff that had happened last year, is that correct, or is that something different?
That's correct, that's what it's labeled in, in the claims as well.
Okay, um, is there any chance?
And just for, just for the, $5,000 of that was, has already been recouped through our insurance.
Okay, so is there any chance that we can get a briefing on that? I know it's gone a little stale, I know that there is some, um, law enforcement involved and things of that nature, but, you know, there's been a lot of questions in the community, and, I mean, I have some questions too, but is there a chance we can maybe get some internal, um, maybe be it at the next council meeting for closed session to let us know what happened of what you can tell us?
Sure, in closed session, we can have that, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and communications, Councilman Russo?
President, I, I appreciate it, I just wanted to take the opportunity, um, there's a memo on here for the Self Insurance Fund Commission, um, it's been an honor for me to serve on that commission since its inception, basically, when Dawn Zimmer, as the mayor, decided we were gonna change how we dealt with our health insurance in the City of Hoboken. Um, in her, uh, wisdom, uh, she appointed me to that, uh, commission, just because I had some expertise in the field. Mayor Bala then followed suit and did the same, so I just really want to say a big thank you to both of them, to really putting politics aside, really putting the residents and, and specifically the residents who live in the City of Hoboken but work for the City of Hoboken, to make sure that they had, uh, someone representing them on that commission, making sure that we had affordable healthcare for our, our employees. And it's been a pleasure to serve on that, and although it's gonna be a busy year for me, so this year I will not be on it, but, um, Jason knows and the administration knows that if they ever need anything from me, I want to help to, to lend a hand when I can, so.
Thank you, Council.
I really want to thank both mayors for, for allowing me to serve.
And from, I appreciate, you served on it before I did, and I appreciate your help on getting me up to speed, it's not an easy, uh, getting an understanding of all that is not easy, so thank you.
Actually, I appreciate it.
Okay, so, uh, A three?
We're gonna vote on the claim.
We're gonna vote on, oh, we didn't vote on the, do we even have to vote on the claims? But.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll do as an.
Kinda did, but anyway, all right, call the vote on the claims, Jimmy.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
Mr. President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye. A three, you wanna read the title, and would you like me to? Resolution authorizing the City of Hoboken to enter into a contract with Police Chief Stephen Aguirre. Uh, Councilman Russo, or did you, no, uh, Councilman President Zano, I'm sorry?
Director Freeman, I have a question for you on this, the attached, uh, contract is the one that we're voting on, correct? There's no mistake there, or it's the three-year?
Three-year contract.
Okay. And I have another question, has the contract with the police union for, our regular police been settled, or?
It's in act of negotiation.
Okay, um, so the, the rank and file is not, has not been approved, do you have any timeframe on that?
Hopefully soon, I mean, contracts and negotiations kind of move at their own pace. I oftentimes with Brian Aloy and the mayor like to move them along quicker, but everyone kinda operates on their, on their own pace, we have six full-time collective bargaining units. There's a, an agreement on tonight's agenda on A four right after this, the fire superiors are settling, the firefighters have not yet, they're, they're not necessarily linear in how they, you know, how we negotiate or, or how they look to negotiate with us.
Okay, um, well, I'll make a statement, I'm a big believer, and I know whether things aren't linear, uh, I'm a big believer in taking care of, uh, the, the core, the worker, before we look at superiors or we look at management. And that's the way you build, uh, a stronger workforce, efficiency, people that care, people that feel looked after. So I struggle that, for example, some of our unions work without a contract, they provide services, although they cannot strike, I guess some of them can't do that, um, but I'm a believer in making sure that the rank and file and whatever department, uh, gets looked after before management and superiors, it just sets a better standard. So I'm a little bit struggling with A three and A four tonight, uh, which I'll, which I can reiterate, uh, on that, and that's why I'm not in support of this tonight.
Council President?
Councilman Russo?
Thank you, Council President. You know, I, I've been struggling with this since it came up at our last meeting about the, not so much the cost associated with it, because I think the chief of police deserves what we're potentially giving him as far as a salary, what struggle I have is that, I've said this a thousand times at this dais, we make decisions at every council meeting, and those decisions are gonna affect what that budget looks like later on in the year. This is one of those decisions, we have an emergency that's coming up in the City of Hoboken, that's gonna cost us $30 million, that's a million and a half dollars a year to our structural deficit. A million and a half more every year that we're gonna add on day one, year over year for 30 years. We continue to make decisions that will affect our budget, which will affect the affordability of our residents and the taxes that they pay on their homes. It becomes problematic time and time again, where we're doing all these things throughout the year, and then when it comes budget time, we say, well, we don't have any influence over these things, their salaries and their pension costs and their healthcare costs. Well, we do have influence over them, we have influence over them when we vote on things like this. This is a three-year contract with built-in raises over the three years. Again, all respect to the police chief, he deserves what we're offering, but maybe, just maybe, we need to start looking at things a little bit more closely as we vote on them through the year. So that's become, it's gonna become a theme throughout the year, especially when we get to the budget time. So I just wanna make sure I reiterate that to my colleagues, make sure we reiterate that to the public, and that's kinda how I feel on a lot of these things. Thank you, Council President.
Council President?
Councilwoman Jabor?
So, I'm confused at the context being applied to what we are voting on. We are voting on a contract for the chief of police. We, as a community, since the unfortunate incident that happened on Halloween, have been extremely, extremely critical about what's happening in public safety in this city. Understandably, people have questions, people have concerns, parents wanna feel safe, they wanna make sure their kids feel safe. And Chief Aguirre, when we had a meeting about that incident in this very room, packed, people in the hallway, people in the lobby, Chief Aguirre stood there and demonstrated what it is to be a strong leader for this public safety department. He has the support of the head of both of the police unions, so the idea that somehow voting on this contract tonight has anything to do with the separate contracts that are actively being negotiated by both of the unions, the fact that both of the heads of those unions have reached out to all of us and been on the record that they support this contract for their chief, who by the way, is the lowest-paid chief in all of Hudson County, it just shocks me that these are the conversations that we're having about this contract, because we're talking about somebody who is an extremely valuable person in this community, who responds to all of us on a 24/7 basis. And I know that we all reach out to him all the time, it doesn't matter what day of the week it is, he is always responsive. And the fact that we are not demonstrating a united front as the legislative body behind him is really disappointing, because it is our job, when there are times of crisis and people have concerns about public safety, to demonstrate that we all have his back so that he can have our back. I am so disappointed that this is clearly becoming a political discussion, in my opinion, because the chief has earned this contract. He will now be the fifth highest-paid chief in Hudson County. He is not asking to become the top-paid chief. And by the way, he scored number one on his chief's test, not just in Hudson County, but in the entire state. I cannot believe that anyone would question whether he is deserving of this contract. And I am disappointed that anybody would not be supportive, given how much we have asked of him. I am very ready to support this contract tonight, and I would ask my colleagues to reconsider their feelings about this vote tonight. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Council President?
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yep, so, um, I'm not gonna lie, I struggled with this, and the main reason why, uh, I am gonna vote yes comfortably, uh, the main reason why we struggled is because of the feedback that we've gotten from our community, that they don't feel safe, they don't feel the police are doing enough to make them feel safe. That, as a councilperson, that's what we're all getting, that's the 200 people that were here that night, um, all of the follow-up conversations, and, you know, conversations with school leaders, and, you know, uh, continued efforts within neighborhoods to wanna do more, um, it's just the reality that we live in right now. So having, you know, a contract come up that, you know, had whatever the significant increases in it, felt very inconsistent with what, as councilmembers, what we're all hearing. That being said, um, throughout, you know, to, uh, Councilwoman Jabor's point, um, you know, Chief Aguirre has answered every single one of my calls. If it's early on a Sunday, he's not very happy about it, but he still answers every one of my calls, um, every one of my texts, he has come and met with neighbors, and we've watched him attempt to rise to the occasion and address the concerns that the community has had with the resources that he has. Do I think there's more that can be done? Yes. Do we maybe disagree a little on how we get there? Yes. But when I think about his focus and interest on, you know, community policing, something we haven't had in a long time, we're seeing evidence more of that, we're seeing him be more supportive now that we don't have, like, the administrative politics on top of us, being more supportive to support Test and Vess and safety on our sidewalks, we're not anywhere near where we have to be, but we're watching him use his police force to get to a better place. So I, um, to me, as I struggled, I, I landed on, I believe in his ability to lead, and I wanna be supportive of him, and I'm hopeful that we're gonna continue to see, um, support, so I'm a yes on this.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Ramos, next?
Yeah, uh, I'll respond to give comments to a couple of my colleagues. There's a, there's a book I read a long time ago, uh, it's called Group Think, and the book talks about, uh, situations, uh, in our country, uh, around the world, where leaders had to make decisions. And, and a lot of bad decisions were made in those instances, Cuban Missile Crisis, uh, you go on and on in the book. And those bad decisions were made because other people in the room didn't speak out. And it wasn't that they was, they would speak out necessarily against the action being taken, it, it may be they get taken the same action but a different approach to it. So I would never question any of my colleagues if they're questioning anything that we do, 'cause that's our job. If we don't question anything on the agenda, I just wanna be played three blind mice, that takes us to a place that I don't wanna be at. So if anyone in the council has a question about anything here, feel free to ask, that makes us better, that makes us better, that moves things forward in the right direction. And I think if you're, if you're on this side of the dais where most of us were in the council that night in the chambers, uh, you know, we, Chief Aguirre was up here, he answered every question that he can, said the best of his ability, right, he put the best face forward for the City of Hoboken that night. If you were on that side of the dais, and people that contacted afterwards, I don't think they were too pleased that night, right? And that's, that was the reality of the situation, leading up to that. Whether, uh, for us, that sponsor, Council Russo, President Zano, myself, who sponsored Test and Vess, and I think you look around the city in disappointment that you have with the, the e-bike riders on our sidewalks still, whether you look at the number of incidents that took place throughout our city, whether it's carjackers that never had before, uh, thefts that we've never had before, in, in various locations that never existed before, but we've always had some sort of crime here, right, we're not gonna stop at zero, I get that, right? So the fact that those issues have to be addressed, when I requested, uh, allocation when, from the prior chief, uh, and then this chief as well, that we needed a second location in the western side of town for police precinct, and that was a monetary issue. We, we spoke about that, we spoke about that, the way we had to move the needle on that was a murder, unfortunately. And now we get, uh, a mobile precinct, hopefully, getting delivered here. So if you don't ask questions, if you just wanna do the group thing, thing, you know, I don't wanna be part of that, you know, I wanna make the chief better, I wanna make our city safer, right? The reason I'll support it tonight, 'cause if I do call him at 6:00 AM on a Tuesday morning, or Thursday night at 11:30, he'll answer my call or my text, right? That's important to us, right? Uh, the common citizen doesn't understand that portion of access that we get, that they don't get, right? We get that access, we get the, the inside baseball stuff, but if you were in that room that night, the number of people that left that night were disappointed, that's the reality, right? Because all of them called us up, of, of what that meeting was at that point in time, they thought it was a, a course of action they were gonna take, and they still don't feel confident about it, right? And, and if I'm lying, someone, someone says, I'm, I'm wrong, all right? And I'll challenge that as well, that people left here that night pretty much disappointed in the way we, we conducted ourselves as a whole, right, and the actions taken. But the responsiveness is there, the growth over a period of time has to be there, I think when Councilwoman Jabor questions, uh, the rating of the Hudson County salary guard, a lot of the other chiefs of the county have a lot more seniority on the job than our current chief does, and that also leads to that, to that differential, when you have more seniority in the job, that leaves that differential as well. But let's not leave here and say, we just have to, you know, not question anyone at any time, 'cause that's our job, I was, we were elected to ask questions, I wasn't elected just to sit here and shut up, that's what somebody else do, not us, I hope not us.
All right.
Well, thank you, Council President.
Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, one thing that hasn't been mentioned in this discussion is morale, accountability and professionalism in our police department. Leadership comes from the top. I think morale is excellent in our department, we ask a lot of our public safety officers, uh, we had a tragic death in the department, uh, from a longtime member, leader of the community, who was suffering from depression and the stress that comes with the job, it was awful, just an awful thing, uh, and all of the members of our public safety are feeling the pressure, the pressure of hundreds of people massing into a room, making demands for them to feel better about their personal safety in what is objectively a very safe community. I've lived here since 1986, my daughters walk the streets at night, I'm gonna leave this meeting tonight, probably at 10:30, 11:00 or so, and I'm gonna walk home and I'm not gonna be looking over my shoulder, because this is a safe community. And our police department does an objectively outstanding job, and they are professionals. And when there are issues, and when there are questions, and when there are concerns, they are responsive and they are accountable, they do not push things under the rug, they address the questions that are presented, and they do an outstanding job. Our chief should not be the lowest-paid chief in Hudson County, it's not right, it's just not right, it's wrong. He deserves this contract, I'm proud to vote for it, and I thank the chief for his service. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Quintero?
Thank you, Council President, um, first, I'll say that I support Chief Aguirre and will be voting yes, uh, on this contract today. I think to, um, say that, you know, we need to hold up this, while we wait for, uh, another contract negotiation is a little bit of a red herring, so, uh, those will proceed, and I trust the administration to, uh, to engage, uh, fairly with, with that union, and, and, and when it gets approved, I'll be happy to support whatever comes, uh, in front of me. With respect to budgeting, I agree that there's plenty of things we spend. With respect to budgeting, I agree that there's plenty of things we spend slash waste our money on. I have expressed my displeasure with a couple of projects in certain areas which are way too expensive, and, you know, as we go forward and we need to trim back, I'll be loud about which ones I think should, should go away. But a, you know, smarter guy than me once said, "Don't tell me what you value, show me your budget, and I'll tell you what you value." Look, I'll say what I value. I value public safety, but I'll also show you by voting yes for this, and supporting our police, our fire, OEM, and the entire public safety apparatus. Chief Aguirre shows up every step of the way, faces off against angry people all the time with grace, with poise. He's the definition of a leader in this community, I'm, I'm proud to support him. We are lucky to have someone like him helming our police force. Yeah, no doubt, there are instances, especially over the past year, sidewalks, you know, some symptoms of, of, of some of the unhoused population, especially those with some mental health issues that make people feel unsafe, right? That's true, and that's real, and that needs to be addressed. But also, the reality is, is that when we look again at statistics, crimes against property, crimes against persons, right, assaults, and although we did have, you know, an uptick in, in murders, generally, the violent crimes have been down in Hoboken over the past number of years, especially under the chief's administration. So, while we do have some work to do on some of the quality-of-life issues, the actual safety of, in our day-to-day is still present, right? So, when he says Hoboken is a safe place, and we have a room full of people kind of rolling their eyes, I understand why they've rolled their eyes in the past, because the quality of issues are present, but the things that actually, you know, make you safe or unsafe when you're in bed at night, those things are still under the control. And I trust that this chief will have a plan to address the other issues, so that we can focus on the quality-of-life things, because we shouldn't feel unsafe. And I'm supporting this contract because I trust he has a plan, I trust we'll roll that, roll that out and see his vision for, over the next three years to, to, to address those things, and, and hopefully, I'll be around to, to help out with that.
President?
Just a quick comment. Thank you, I appreciate it. I, I love that I heard so much support for our public safety, it's amazing. I just want to remind everybody, I'm going to hold you all to it when we ask for 20 more officers, that the chief came to that, to the dais to tell us that that's what he needs to make a permanent parks patrol in the city of Hoboken. So, I'm very happy everyone's so supportive of our public safety, and I'm going to hold everybody's feet to the fire when that vote comes up as well. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Council Russo, your interpretation is, is interesting, but I, I think I am going to support this contract, I think the, that perception really does matter. It's, it's kind of like the economy, when everyone thinks the economy is going down the toilet, and people stop spending, and the economy can be hurt. And when people think that there's a, they feel, as we've heard, we feel that there's been a problem, then it's a perception, and they grow more concerned. And I'm not saying it's not real, I, I believe that the people who are in this room did leave disappointed, I'm not questioning that, but being disappointed is not the same as a fact, and the reality of, as Councilman Quintero has been saying, of what this criminal statistics are. You know, being disappointed is not reality, and, and, and I think it's dangerous for us to depict a situation that, that there is a safety issue in this city when, as Councilman Quintero, I'm going to keep going back to you, as the Public Safety Chair, it, you know, yes, it's, you know, we don't like to see the homeless on Washington Street, and, and there are instances, but there are things that are public safety, and then there are other things that are public perception. And so, I'm confident that the chief will rectify the situation, things will get better, and, but I urge us all to, to not overreact and to not exaggerate, you know, conditions in our city with regard to public safety.
Council President?
Council President?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
Mr. President Zano?
No.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
A4.
I believe.
Me.
Thank you, Council.
So, if I'm going to be attacked again by Councilwoman Jabor making a political statement, I'm going to defend myself. Not once did I say anything about the qualifications, the job, or anything, any of the superiors or Chief Aguirre of what he's done. What I said was, "I want to see, and I believe in, the rank-and-file looked after first before management." So, don't ever put words in my mouth. That's political grandstanding, when you try to paint a picture of me. I merely said the process. Not once did I attack the chief or anybody else, I spoke about a process. And God forbid, I ask questions up here.
Can A4?
A4 is the same thing, superiors as well, but I got cut off, and I have the right to defend myself up here if I'm going to be attacked. That's not going to happen this year, as anybody up here who wants to run for mayor wants to take shots, I'm ready.
Council President, I think A4 was pulled by Councilman Russo, if I'm correct.
Both of us did, actually, I think.
Okay.
Thank you for the interruption, again. It's just, it's going to be political grandstanding for the next nine months into, into the election. The bottom line is, the workers are to be taken care of first. That's something I believe in, a healthy system for a healthy company, we are a company, a healthy government, is when we have healthy and happy workers, we have more productive workers. It's a simple concept, it's not challenging who's better at this if they're doing a great job, not once was I saying that. I was asking, I was basically saying, "The process." And that I want to look out for the workers that are doing the heavy lift for a lot of us. That's why, again, I would be a no on A4 for the contract here. And it's not a matter of the jobs that those individuals are doing, it's a fact I believe that the workers should be taken care of first.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Russo?
Thank you, Council President. I know this has been an ongoing issue with the Fire Department, with the tier system. I know the firefighters and the fire officers are reluctantly optimistic for the oxymoron about this, but I am happy that they were able to kind of lessen that divide a little bit, and I'm very supportive of this contract tonight, because I know our firefighters and those superiors have been working hard with the administration to do exactly that, to get with, or at least get closer to what they're trying to achieve. So, I will be supportive of this tonight.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Ramos?
Yeah, I mentioned many times in the past regarding the tier system, I was a member of a union, my teachers' union had a tier system, and how it really disintegrated morale within our district, having that tier system, and we eliminated it eventually. So, hopefully, you know, we've closed the gap to this point, but hopefully, we're able to eliminate that gap in the future, because people doing the same exact job, getting paid a lot different, and, and it's, it's not fair, and theirs eyes, they go to work feeling differently about themselves, so.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody else? Councilman Cohen?
Just a quick comment, you know, obviously, we respect the collective bargaining process here, we have the unions negotiated a contract with the administration, and that's a good thing. So, I just want to, I'd be happy to support this contract. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
Mr. President Zano?
No.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
CA2, which is...
Council President?
Can I read it? Or, "Resilience and authorizing an application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Grant Program to fund the development of 800 Neuro..." This is Resiliency Park, which is the presentation we just saw, thank you, the hearing.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. So, again, this, this story starts with Mayor Zimmer, when we were negotiating the building at 770 Jackson, and I remember being in those negotiations for two years, and talking about what I envisioned in that neighborhood. And I'll never forget the time I sat in that, in that, one part of that negotiation, Jim, you were there, and I said to our attorney, I said, "And we're going to get that property at 800." And he would say to me, "We're in litigation, Michael, you can't say that out loud, don't say that."
Who would say that?
Joe, or CD.
I thought you were blaming me.
No, he would warn me all the time, "Don't talk about it, we're in current, currently, we're in litigation." And we talked about it all the time behind closed doors, and I made some serious promises about working as hard as possible to get that parcel of land, and we were able to do that, because we wanted to stop a 14-story tower that was going to be built on that land, and we actually had the ability to accomplish that. We actually got the property, and it was not until now Mayor Balla who negotiated that. So, we, we, we were able to achieve that, get the property, and now we're looking at the last piece of a full recreational area in the Third Ward, where it's just going to be amazing once it's done. So, this is the next step to make sure that we're getting as much money as we can to build this out. I'm super excited, I'm asking all my colleagues here tonight to support this, and to continue to support all funding options so that we can finalize this park. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Russo. Anyone else?
Call the vote.
On CA2, Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
Mr. President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
CA9, I believe this is you, Councilman Russo, or is it?
Me.
I'm sorry.
Councilman President Zano.
I'm going to roll, chime in on this one, no question, no questions there. I know we all were briefed over the past couple of weeks, and there was a couple of questions that Caleb had answered for me today. I have a couple of statements, and then I also have some questions. In working on this bond, or this $30 million project, are, and I guess this goes to either Caleb or to Director Freeman, is there any, are we exploring other funding sources, federal, state, county, everything along, which I'm guessing, is that the case?
We, we can, there's limited in our initial, there's limited amounts of money that are, can be earmarked for, like, grant money earmarked for emergency projects like this, projects that are much more attractive as it relates to resiliency, climate action, things like that, oftentimes lend itself more to grant opportunities and things like this, but we have been pursuing them, we will continue to, we just have not found any yet.
And do we have an inspection process that we exist in, that we have protocol inside the city on, on your side of things for degradation of infrastructure, other than, you know, our water and sewer lines, but like our parks, our waterfront, and things like that?
The, the answer is yes, I think there's, there's different things when it comes to parks and playgrounds that are all surface area, when you're talking about things that are in the water. We are now going to be far more proactive in this, but, but again, this is, you know, this bulkhead was built around 60 years ago, their useful lives are not meant to last this long, and this is kind of where we stand right now, and we're going to move forward to repair that.
Okay, so, if it was built, I mean, 2009, correct me if I'm wrong, people that were on the council? 2009 or 11, when the soccer field went in? 11?
What's the question, the last what?
When the...
Last pier collapsed.
Last pier collapsed was the soccer field. That's 11, or 9?
09.
Okay, 09.
Last inspection was 11.
11 was...
It collapsed in 09.
Okay, 11 was PRA with the worms, or is that?
11 was when we last inspected.
Okay, so 11 when we last inspected. I'm struggling here, and it's pretty easy for me to point the finger on this one, I, I mean, there's no question that we have to vote for this, otherwise, we lose our waterfront. But are, while we sit here and we talk about all these things about climate change and everything else that exists, you know, we're suing big oil, we're changing your electric bills, and we're building parks left and right, great, it's awesome, except we're ignoring, we ignored our biggest park, our biggest asset. We didn't have anything set up to look at it, I mean, it's systemic, it's a systemic failure. And because of that, we're going to saddle the taxpayers with that, and, and we had to stop that. You know, we, we come up here and we think bonding is just like, you know, it's an easy thing to do, but the stuff adds up. You know, I, I'm perplexed a little bit, you know, the, the settlement for the Monarch site just keeps, it's a gift that keeps on giving. We had to pay $80 for a DPW garage, some people might agree with me, I wasn't on the council for this, but now that bulkhead or that part over there is, needs 4.5 million, or 4 million, or 4.2 million of some adjustment, or some help. You know, when we make these decisions, when we buy these things, or when we looked at, when we bought Union Dry Dock, did we do any research on this? The bulkhead extends past that, that's not a part of this, this bond that we're going to do. I mean, before we go purchase land, do we do the inspections that we need to make sure that down the road, we're not going to be saddling the taxpayer with more bills? You know, we bought Union Dry Dock, we had the Monarch settlement, I mean, I would think that if we're doing our due diligence, that we get somebody in the water to kind of look what we're buying, or what we're getting, or we're swapping for. This isn't going to get any easier. I mean, if we want 20 more police officers, right, it's going to run money into the budget. If we want a new high school, that's going to put money, that's going to cost us on, not our side, on the other side. So, nice things cost money. What I want to see going forward is a maintenance plan for everything. If we bond for anything going forward, and I ask my council colleagues up here, that we should include a maintenance plan in every bond that we do, something that's ad hoc that we can go by, that in year five, we're going to send divers down, or in the fifth year, we're going to do a comprehensive view of the Northwest Park, which is breaking already. We need to have something where we're protecting our assets so that the costs don't get so exorbitant, we've could have probably, this could have probably been maybe maintained or fixed before. And I, I just struggle up here is, is one of the, as a newer person up here, that some of the basic stuff, we all take care of things in our house, right? If you don't paint the walls, the, the paint starts peeling, or you, they got scuff marks all over the place. If you gotta, if you don't take care of your gas stove, you may have glass, gas leaks. Your grill, for many of us that, growing up, I won't say in Hoboken, but if you didn't take care of that grill, come the winter months, you know, you'd have that huge gas, or grease or gas fire that happens in the grill. You take care of things. And I feel as if we just don't do that. And, and it's, there's something my wife always says, that's, it sticks to my head every time I think about this with money, is a politician's tenure, our four years, never matches the balance sheet, because we just keep kicking the can down the road for the next politician that gets in the seat, and if you're lucky enough, those 20 or 30 years, no offense, some of you up here, those 20 or 30 years, you don't have to deal with the problem, you left it with someone else. So, going forward, I'm going to be, of course, I'm supportive of this, because it's the, one of the most iconic things that we have in this town and, and in the world, I'm going to make sure that's taken care of, but we need to do a better job of inspections so that we don't let costs get out of hand, and the taxpayers are left saddling the bill. One last point, I think that, I, I hope there's some discussion tonight, since this is an emergency bond, I, I hope, I know there was some discussion, I, I hope some of you bring that up, that, that think it's pretty important, that maybe we need to look at that, and maybe in the future, how the mayor puts the executive order out, that maybe we should start a fund for the waterfront, for the bulkhead, because if it is 60 years old, that means there's going to be more pieces breaking, we're going to have to start saving up money for when our kids are living in Hoboken, and they're not going to be saddled with $100 million of a bond. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm sorry, which one of you? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go after you, that's fine.
Thank you. I did, I did speak to some of my council colleagues over the weekend, Councilman Fisher, President Zano, Councilman Russo, with regard to this, this bond, and specifically, the 1% portion for the executive order, and I did have a conversation with the mayor's office prior to this, the meeting tonight, if we could try and eliminate that 1%... If we could try and eliminate that 1% for this item specifically, because we don't want to see the additional burden, this is an emergency, this isn't something that we planned for, like we see 800 Monroe Street earlier today, or Southwest Park, or Northwest Resiliency Park. This is an emergency, so I don't think we want to add on to that burden of carrying that 1% tax. I think, Mr. Farina, did you have a conversation with the administration, your party administration?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to make sure I understand. So the executive order was changed probably a year and a half ago. The 1% is actually split half and half. So there is half percent goes to the arts fund, there's another half that goes to public facilities, very similar to what Councilman President Zano had just talked about, as it relates to the establishment of a trust.
Affordable housing, I believe.
Both. It's capital improvements. So it's up to you if you want to eliminate the full 1% or just the half?
I'd say the full for this instance. But down the road, definitely supportive of, because not just this is coming up, right? Rebuild by design coming up. And one of the main concerns that I had the entire time through that conversation was there was no long-term maintenance plan to pay for that. So if we have any future bonds, we definitely have to allocate some funding potentially to rebuild by design maintenance as well, whether it's that from the, the two cent tax for our parks. I think rebuild by design is a, is a park there. We have parks going all over the city right now, but that definitely a two cent tax to go to that. So all of this adds up. And that 1% doesn't seem like a lot, but on 30 million dollars, that is a lot. It, it certainly adds up. So if we could save that portion here with this bond tonight, and in future bonds, I think the mayor said we could have a meeting next week to discuss this longer term for RBD and others, and, and future bonding sources. So I definitely want to have, have that conversation on how we maintain just the waterfront, but everything else that we have in town, specifically the RBD. Because it's, it could be like 30 years from now, it could be the New Orleans situation, right? The, the gates don't shut, and town gets flooded again if we have a storm like Sandy again. So we want to avoid that by any means necessary, make sure we're doing regular inspections throughout the city with regards to our waterfront and RBD. Thank you.
Council President.
Councilman Fisher?
Yeah, just, just to clarify, just one point that was raised tonight. First of all, I agree, you know, we should, over the years, we should have been more proactively maintaining all of our public spaces. It's not a strength of this city, this administration. In terms of being able to like reserve money for future capital projects, that's something that's only been able to be allowed probably in, in the last year. I mean, we've, we've looked at that, we spoke with our auditor, we spoke with council in the past, and we're very limited in terms of what we're allowed to tax taxpayers today and do with that money. We can't just set up accounts here or there and put money in it and save it for future uses. There's a very specific kind of list of things that we're allowed to do. And even under Don Zimmer, when I was here, we talked about creating something for infrastructure for our water system in the future, and we asked all the questions, we weren't allowed to do it. So there is a big push and lobbying effort to be able to do that. So this, I don't even know what we're allowed to do under this half a percent. I know we do affordable house, portable housing related with the half of 1%, but I don't even know what we're allowed to reserve there. So I'm not sure we're actually able to invest in an infrastructure fund. I'm not sure it's allowed under state law, but it's something that we, hasn't been allowed in the past, but something that we clearly should look into because we have a ton of infrastructure that we need to maintain better.
I just want to be, I just want to be clear on that piece. That's, that's really exactly what that second half a percent is. So my, I, I understand completely, Councilman, what you're requesting. Based on what the conversation, I would recommend keeping that second half a percent in as it relates to public improvement for facilities. Because that's, yeah. That's just my recommendation based on that conversation.
Council President.
Councilman Russo?
Council President, I didn't like that look. You know, sometimes institutional knowledge and, and history kind of comes into play. When PRA and, and the beginnings of the waterfront were built, there was a maintenance fee built into all of that, and that was actually being funded by the Port Authority.
Well, it was the surface.
Well, it was a maintenance fee. It was still a maintenance fee.
They're still funding it.
So, so there, there were opportunities for us as a city to continue to do that as we continued down the waterfront. This is, this is really concerning for me because I feel like we're so reactive and we're never proactive. In 2011, we inspected our waterfront, we inspected that bulkhead, and there was a specific recommendation to make repairs then. And we didn't do it. And then year went by, and two years went by, and five years went by, and 10 years went by, and almost 15 years went by, and we still didn't do it. We waited for it to collapse. That is not strong decisive leadership. Strong decisive leadership is taking on that as it comes. That's what we need to do. That is my biggest concern here. Of course, we're supportive of this. Everyone should be. We need to make sure that our citizens are safe. But we also need to make sure that we don't turn a small problem into a $30 million problem that becomes a $1.5 million year-over-year problem with no recouping that funding, except from everyone's pocket. That can't happen anymore. I'm supportive tonight, but it's a warning. It's a warning to everyone. We need to be better. Thank you, Council President.
Council President.
Councilman Jabour?
I promise.
No, no, no.
So actually, I have a different understanding, I think, of the situation, and I wanted to comment to say, thank you so much to the Department of Environmental Services for having the wherewithal to do a full inspection, top to bottom of the entire waterfront. So we all received a briefing with the findings from this inspection from Colliers Engineering. And what impressed me is the fact that we did take this opportunity to ensure that we would be proactive, that there wouldn't be another sinkhole that developed based on what had happened, the unfortunate first instance back in June. It's unfortunate to me that this wasn't realized in 2009 or in 2011, that there wasn't an opportunity to do a full investigation of the waterfront, because perhaps at that time there would have been a recognition of the fact that the materials that were used for the bulkhead construction weren't actually going to be as long-lived as we would have believed to be. That was one of the findings that we were briefed on, was unfortunately, what caused the sinkhole in June, in part, is the fact that some of the materials that were used were not appropriate for purposes of a bulkhead. And so there was an expectation that there should have been a certain longevity based on the initial construction date that wasn't going to come to be because of those faulty materials. And certainly, we have the benefit of time and technology moving forward so that we know better now. But I actually think the administration did a great job ensuring that everything about the waterfront from top to bottom was inspected, so that this is actually a full and holistic approach to ensuring that there won't be any future instances of sinkholes like what happened in June. So I just wanted to say thank you to the Department of Environmental Services, Jen Gonzalez, who'd handled this, and to the folks at Colliers who provided that information to us. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Cohen?
Yes. My recollection of the, what happened back in 2011, that bedeviled, the Zimmer administration was focused on shipworms that were eating the piers that were supporting the roadway that was collapsing. And that was a major ordeal for her administration. My, 20 million is the number that comes to my mind back, when 20 million dollars in 2011 was 20 million dollars. Now, we're dealing with a $30 million issue, not with wooden piers supporting the waterfront, but with a concrete seawall, which I saw a diagram of, that divers explored, and all of the council people were giving presentations on. And the seawall goes from one end of the waterfront all the way up to 15th Street. And the, the bond that we're going to be voting on later addresses erosion of the seawall in numerous places.
Multiple locations.
Main point is where you've seen the sinkhole and the fencing off down by Sybil's Cave. But there are other locations near, closer to PRA, and also all the way down by Hudson T Building, where there are eroded concrete. And this administrator mentioned that 60 years, in my presentation, I think it was, it was at least 80 years, this concrete seawall has been supporting. And the, it's not a straight line, it's sort of a, it's, yeah, it's kind of a, it weaves, it bobs, it goes in different locations. But part of it supports the roadway on Sinatra Drive, part of it supports the walkway, where people go out with their families. So this is, frankly, this is exactly what you bond for. We're going to have this over 30 years. We have about $150 million annual budget. We're looking at a $30 million expense. We want to do this over time. We want to get our waterfront restored as soon as we can. I've had a number of constituents say to me, "Phil, what's going on with the waterfront? When can we enjoy it again? Why is it fenced off? It looks terrible. We want to be able to enjoy it." By voting on what we're voting on today, we start to step forward of addressing the entire seawall from north to south, focused mainly in the area where we have the sinkhole over by Sybil's Cave, but the whole, the whole enchilada is being addressed here tonight. So it's not, it's obviously not a great situation. It's frankly, it's one, I never even knew that the seawall was in this location. I, I saw it for the first time in the presentation that I saw from the city. But they sent divers down right away in August, and this is what they came back with from the report. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Excuse me, Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
Mr. President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cataro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle? Aye. We're up to CA 12, I believe. That was Councilman President Zano?
Yes. I guess, Caleb Maynor, can you tell me, this is just to resurface the floor, or?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. The resolution authorizing New Jersey Department of Community Affairs 2025 Local Recreation Improvement Grant for Multi-Service Center Gymnasium Floor Improvement.
All right, so I'll, can we?
Gymnasium floor.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. I'm happy, I'm happy we're doing it. We'll probably rip the thing down in three years because we're pretty good at spending money and then ripping something down in a few years. Councilman Russo, didn't we just rip the closets out over there, right? We gonna, I mean, I don't know who's doing everything here, but maybe we can do something together instead of piecemeal? Like, because we could have ripped those out and redid the floor at the same time, maybe. I don't know. I'm just asking the question because I know that was only a couple meetings ago, but it seems from that, from that standpoint, we have an issue of coordinating things. But I think also, I think we, I discussed over the weekend as well about the floors over at?
Jackson Street.
Jackson Street, yeah.
Also very, very slippery. A lot of complaints from parents and adults that are playing in that location, slipping and falling, and some people getting hurt.
In the?
Jackson Street.
605 Jackson.
605 Jackson.
Yep, the gymnasium indoors. Because it's slippery outside.
It's not, it's not a hardwood floor. That's a plat, well, I don't know, plastic, but it's not, is it hardwood?
It's like a resilient rubberized.
Yeah, I think that's, you need to always wet the bottom of your shoes there. This will lead me into another question, and I don't know who can answer this. The times for people going into the gym, when, I guess Rec Department, who's Rec? Oh, sorry.
I can answer, Councilman.
Caleb?
I can answer, Councilman.
Oh, you can answer that. So there are some, I've had a couple residents, not just one, ask me about how some of those are decided, or how, how you get them. I know you can go through Rec Desk, and if it's there, it's not there. Is there any chance some of those, some of those times can be used for open rec time?
We've talked about it. I think it's a, it's something we would like to be able to do. Ultimately, it's a balancing act, right? We've, we've all talked about this, about the limited space we have. Anytime we take any space away from any organization, I think all eight of you get a phone call yelling and screaming about something that we're doing wrong. So the reality is, it's a balancing act, it's a, it's a priority, it's a, it's a decision related to priorities, right? So if the council, along with the mayor, wants to prioritize open gym in lieu of a organization or a different, someone else renting that space, that's an opportunity that we can explore. I think ultimately, it's a decision related to coordination.
Council President, could I jump in just to follow up a question?
Yes, Council.
Director, so organization, I understand, right? But are there any individuals that are renting space?
Yes, so we've had this conversation, this exact conversation relates to the council, and I could probably actually pull up a lot of the emails that went back and forth. The number one priority, or the number one factor that we were given initially as it related to when we implemented Rec Desk and had some new rec staff come in, was to prioritize legacy organizations or legacy groups that had been reserving gym space. So we have kind of had to rejigger the way we operate, but the number one priority, as I think it lays down the ordinance, is Hoboken resident, the organization has to be based in Hoboken. We've seen a number of organizations that aren't necessarily based in Hoboken that have now opened up a PO box to kind of get around some of those things. But I think the, the situation, Councilman, that you're referencing is, there's one night a week for two hours in the winter where a group, an individual, or it's an individual, but it's been the same, I don't know how many people have been reserving the space from either 9 to 11 or 10 to 12, I think 9 to 11, for the better part of probably 10 to 15 years. Now, if that's something we want to get away from, that's a, again, that's, it's a, it's a priorities and policy conversations relates to who we allow in the gym and when.
Yeah, well, I, I asked the question because I remember specifically when we passed the ordinance, there was that hierarchy, right? There was city, city-run, you know, leagues, then there was, I believe it was Housing Authority and school, right? And I forgot which one took precedent over the other. And then there were nonprofits, Hoboken-based nonprofits, not Hoboken-based, and for-profits, and then for-profits.
I think the bottom, the bottom rung that you're just referencing, like that tier, is kind of a little, I'm sorry?
Rubens said, never just a crew of friends, right?
Right. So again, it's, it's a decision that we can go back and revisit exactly what we want that hierarchy to be. I just want to be very clear, someone is always going to, for lack of better terms, feel like they're screwed out of the process, right? And I think that's a conversation that we all can have collectively as to what's the best course of action, and knowing that we have limited field space, limited gym space, we do the best we can. Councilman President Zano, to your point about coordination, probably about two months ago, and the reason we had to take out those closets when we did was Cheer Dynamics, the cheerleading program for the city, received a grant from the state of New Jersey. Part of that grant, they purchased a tumble track?
There you go.
It got delivered?
There you go.
We didn't, I know, I'm on it. We were given one day's notice for the delivery of the tumble track. So I will, you could go see it, it's enormous. We didn't really have the ability to just kind of store it. So, and, and just to be, this is just the application for the grant. So I, we have to wait to hear back, then we'll have to, so I hear you, and we try, but sometimes there are certain parts that are out of our control.
You, you said it like a proud cheerdy.
I had to think about it first.
You did. Good.
Anybody else? Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
C.D. 6, Resolution toward professional service contract to Triad Associates to prepare an environmental review record for the Hoboken Community Center voucher application in the not-to-exceed amount of $3,500. Councilman Russo.
Thank you, Council President. I am 1 million percent supportive of this, but it just triggered something, and I wanted to know, Director, if you have two seconds to just come up and let us know where we are in the veteran housing vouchers as well in relation to their environmental study.
Is that relevant to this particular?
Yeah, I took the opportunity because they're kind of the same.
It's not, but go ahead.
Yeah, they're both, they're both voucher-based programs, so.
Okay.
And they both need the same Chapter 58.
Well, answer, answer the question if you would, Director.
Sure. Five seconds for him to tell me where we are.
He's running a tight ship tonight. He said that from the beginning.
Proud of him.
The process is wrapping up within the next week, and the next stage would be the Housing Authority Board moving forward with a couple of different reports to S.L.R. and A.H.A.P.
Okay.
To effectuate their full request to release of funds.
Perfect, thank you very much. I appreciate it, Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Russo, for your inquisitiveness. Mr. Farina, call the vote, C.D. 6.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour.
Yes.
Presontano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Council President, I believe the next item is C.L. 2, and the sponsors wish to carry it.
Okay, Councilman Fisher, C.L. 2, okay, that'll be carried, which means we are done with resolutions?
Can I just make, I wanted to pull C.D. 9, just make a comment on C.D. 9 really quickly, if I can, Council President? C.D. 9?
We passed already?
I know it passed, yeah, passed. Just want to comment if I can, really.
That's, well, Councilman Russo talks about other stuff that's not relevant.
This is relevant to C.D. 9.
Council President, get used to it, buddy.
This, C.D. 9 was in regards to 38 Jackson Street. We had a public meeting a week and a half ago, and many concerns with regards to any change with 38 Jackson Street were based upon traffic, were concerns on traffic in the area and the impact those changes may make, were making it an educational component to the site. So this is paying for that traffic study at that time, and then when the traffic study is returned, we're going to have another public meeting to give the results of the traffic meeting and how we can manage traffic in the area to try and accommodate the school facility as well as the grocery store at the base of 38 Jackson Street. So I want to make sure that everyone understands the process is still ongoing, but this is the second step in the process now. The public meeting was step one, the traffic plan is step two, amending the redevelopment plan is step three, hopefully February 5th, then go into the planning board after that, public meeting for the traffic study, planning board approval, city council final approval, hopefully sometime in the spring. So that's the process going forward as far as 38 Jackson Street goes and any potential amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. Ordinance is first reading.
C.L. 2 is carried. Ordinance for introduction, amending Chapter 190 entitled Vehicles and Traffic to Clarify Off-Street Fees by Day of the Week.
Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Fisher.
Yes.
Jabour.
Yes.
Presontano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Ordinance for introduction, and ordinance amending Chapter 190, amendments for all the public safety, EMT parking.
Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour.
Yes.
Presontano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
令forintroduction, amendment to the Hoboken City Code, Chapter 138, outdoor dining to amend specific parklets to require the removal of all permanent decking and require quarterly license renewal.
You could call the vote, I just wanted to make a point in order on something else.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
No.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes, on first reading.
Mrs. Jabour.
Yes, on first reading.
Presontano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
No.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Yes, on first reading.
Council President, on the ordinance about the chapter, I'm sorry, Chapter 85 condominium conversions, I just wanted to.
Number six?
Yeah, I wanted to remove that.
Yep.
I'm concerned, I mean, we got some information from the state that they no longer dictate how rents are being calculated at Marine View, but the second phase of what Marine View's trying to do has to do with the potential condominium conversions, and I don't know if I necessarily want to do that now. I think we should hold this until we get a little bit more clarity from Marine View, where we are, what that looks like, and then we could revisit this at a later date.
My understanding is this just says, it conforms with the existing state law.
I have no issue pulling it, I think we should talk about it in subcommittee, just so you have a full understanding of what it is.
Yeah, that would, that would make me feel a lot more comfortable, I appreciate that.
Is the sponsor willing to?
Yes, he is.
Yes, okay. All right, so Jimmy, you can read ordinance number four. We're all gonna go take a break.
They'll do this, poor Jimmy.
So am I. Bond ordinance authorizing the completion of various capital improvements for the replacement of shoreline bulkheads, walkways at properties located at Hoboken City Block 259, Lot 2, commonly known as the Castle Point, situated between 90 Frank Sinatra Drive and 9 Castle Point Terrace, 201 Sinatra Drive, Hoboken City Block 231.5, Lot 4, 401 Sinatra Drive, Hoboken City Block 233, Lot 1, 1500 Shipyard Lane, Hoboken City Block 264.02, Lot 1, for the repaving of Sinatra Drive between First Street and Fourth Street, including public art acquisition, installation, and capital facilities improvement allocations related thereto, and for the City of Hoboken, County of Hudson, New Jersey, appropriating a sum of $30,224,240, therefore authorizing the issuance of general obligation bond or bond anticipation notes for the City of Hoboken, County of Hudson, New Jersey, and the aggregate principal amount of $28,808,28, making certain determinations and covenants, and authorizing certain related actions in connection with the foregoing.
Get yourself a glass of water.
Council President.
Are we talking about the 5%, the 1%?
The 1%.
Jimmy, could you read that again?
Bond ordinance.
Are we amending this, or?
Yeah, to remove one, are we voting to?
To reduce it by a half a percent, the 1%, 2.5.
Yes.
Okay, do we?
All right, I'm striking the public art portion, I just want to be clear.
Okay, thank you.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Do we want to vote on that as an amendment?
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, okay. Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Amended, Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour.
Yes.
Presontano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
令forintroduction, amending Chapter 192 parking for persons with disabilities.
Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour.
Yes.
Mr. Presontano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Okay, so the other ordinance is, we have.
Carried.
They're carried.
The new business.
No, the new business comes after public portion, which is right now. So we've added names, which we're already on, so, okay, so Enrique Herrera, five minutes, everyone? Is this, can you lower that? There you go. It says.
Neuralink expose. I was just discussing something, yeah.
I understand that, but I'm just asking why he wrote this, but this is just, that was just, that's not another name of somebody, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I hope we all realize that one of the things I've been very adamant about is exposure in terms of any illegal technology usage or any compromising of any communication channels. The one thing about the specific type of Neuralink that's now in clinical trials in Canada, and it failed in New Jersey because of the Rutgers campus not being able to supply legal trial work, and it was just black market stuff that students were using, it was very much utilized for illegal purposes. One of the other things I advocate against is the AI D.S.A.M., which is deepfake sexual assault material, which is something that the Defiance Act would provide some sense of federal protections for on the local level. By doing that, I kind of nip at the butt of this specific topic of the technology used to transfer that information, like any type of visual stimuli, which is advanced enough that you can neurokinetic technology images and airdrop into the human mind, and this is actually very advanced and very, very new. I think that preventative measures involving any type of, any type of new age technology should be looked at, not necessarily put into the practice of like, you know, like that kind of practice where we're just stopping everything, prioritizing it, but just set aside like a day or two just to really like hit home at how all of these things interweave. My target, though, before I even hit the communication channel, which is the Neuralink expose, and I think I got, I got something in here, it just involves more or less the production of any AI alternate timeline assault material where you can literally create a timeline, pause the timeline of what we're doing right now, and I make a left turn, it becomes something that's rated R in illicit content, which could be added to the Defiance Act if it were to have passed, if it's already on the way there. That way, we can always have like some sense of basic netting for any type of illicit content in terms of anyone's face. I am a victim of it, a lot of the women in my life were victims of it, and I was one of the more braver ones to really out that behavior of college kids making deepfakes. In New Jersey, there were a couple news stories involving it in terms of, I think it was Westchester or something like that, I'm pretty sure, but this is a very new topic of matter, and it's something that's not really spoken of. Now, in terms of any type of black market technology like Neuralinks that are currently in clinical trials for people who have no arms or legs, that they can move around the computer screens, I don't know if you've ever seen like a video or something like that, but it involves that. This also kind of exposes that behavior as something like almost demonic, frankly, because people could just sit there and look at each other, and they just know what they're thinking, and it's just communication channel errors and stuff, it's real-time communication. So for some college kids, that's just how you meet people because of the way some schools operate with terms of the technical institutes and Rushgers and Stevens, and that's something I went to Wu Liang, the neurological center's main head, that involved himself with this type of Neuralink clinical trial and stuff like that. You know, Neuralink is something people met someone through, it's not necessarily just a communication channel for students to plagiarize work and stuff like that, partners or involving any type of illicit prostitution or dating number system where, you know, we're the same compatibility and we utilize the same number system with an enforcement tool, which usually is something under the ground thing we don't really like to talk about. Any type of friend groups that involve themselves in these type of circle or cluster mobs that involve the same kind of communication channel, involve these groups of synchro junkies involving this technology, which with advanced technology involving downloading or airdropping deepfakes into your mind and stuff like that, that is advancements in that technology without government oversight, which Defiance Act would provide some sense of netting for, you know, not everyone is perfect with that, you know, with that type of expose, which is something that my Instagram account provides, and that's why I've always like tagged Emily in it or Phil Cohen, I just added you on social media. My threads account was compromised because of certain exposes. It's also used for intelligence, so like any type of communication channel that compromises any court or anything should have some sense of way to communicate freely about it, where it's not an off-putting topic, and it does involve technology that's indistinguishable from schizophrenia, where you can communicate that, you can communicate that in real time in your private moments and stuff like that. And as a woman, you're not properly educated on this technology. It's used, it's half-aid educating you so that your consequences involve you not knowing too much and you know what it is, or it's something involving illegal activity. Hopefully, we can actually move past the off-putting subject of schizophrenia and look toward it as an intel channel, not necessarily something to be afraid of, but I have no fear about it, and I'm open for suggestions. I wrote a book about it, and I don't treat this as a tragedy, I more or less exposed it already to the degree that anyone can speak to me freely about it, and it involves curriculum, so I hope you guys take that into consideration, and I hope I'm gonna be voting for Emily Jaber for mayor, okay?
Thank you very much. Batia Zamalt, is it Batia or? You want to bring that down, the microphone, please?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me and having us. We've been sending a lot of emails since the summer about the rat issue in Uptown Hoboken. It sort of took a while to get things going in our neighborhood, but I feel like we finally have some action steps taken, thanks in large part to the two of you, Councilman Russo and Councilman Ramos, thank you so much for putting the ordinance forward for the parklets, it's really something that needs to happen, and it's at least a start. We started pretty actively, we're only 18 brownstones on our block, we're a small block, we're a really pretty close group. We started a rat patrol in the summer where we have been going out in the mornings and in the evenings, different groups of us, taking pictures of garbage, sending them very annoyingly to all of you at all times of the day and night. However, I think that we have come to the conclusion that I'm sure you all have come to many times before, which is that we have to stop playing whack-a-mole. We don't want to solve the problem in one neighborhood and have it go to another neighborhood. We can look to New York City and see what they've done, and they've done things so effectively just by eliminating parklets, they've been able, at least even seasonally, they've been able to greatly reduce the rat population, so I really encourage you to do that, I hope everybody's for it. One thing that I've noticed in this experience of being involved with the rat patrol is that there's an issue with enforcement in town, because, for example, condo associations, so on 14th Street, there are many buildings, they're all condos, each building may have a different building maintenance company, and the maintenance company is not actually accountable for violations because they're a company, they're not a person. So as we have sort of come across these obstacles that allows an actual human being to be held accountable, I hope that you all are sort of keeping a list, like here we are in the parklet problem, and we have people who are creating a solution, but I really hope that we are creating solutions as we go to some of the obstacles that we have in the various departments to hold people accountable. One of the things that I noticed is that before we were getting a little traction, we turned in a petition that I helped collect a number of addresses on about 160 in 45 minutes. I didn't have one person that answered the door that didn't want something to be done with the rat situation. I really hope as a town that we can come together in every ward, it's really feasible to eliminate, not maybe eliminate the rats, but really reduce the population, and I hope we can all work together as a whole town. The other thing that I noticed in specific was this issue at 1319 Park, which is really very interesting, because 1319 Park is owned by three different owners, and 2/3 of it or something is on the land of the 14th Street condos, and another third is part of the old button factory. My understanding is that taxes have not been paid on that building, and Tiffany's done, and Councilman Fisher's done a lot of work to investigate all of this for us, which we really appreciate. My understanding is that taxes haven't been paid on that property for a long time. A group of people went to 1319 with the health commissioner and Ms. Fisher, and it was determined on November 8th that visit was, that that building should be condemned. An orange sticker is now placed on that building saying that it was gonna come down on January 8th, the building is still up. It's condemned, there's been rats around them, it was determined that there were rats inside of them, the building has to come down. So my question is, between the tax department, the sanitation department, the health department, and the zoning department, before we sort of all started a little scut about this, where was sort of the catch for it? Like, where's the accountability? Like, where are we seeing that there's a missing piece? So, okay, maybe it was missed up until now, and now we're getting on track, and that's super. So as of January 8th, according to the sticker on the building, every week their violation for it not coming down is $2,000 a week. So we're up to $4,000, and I hope we're collecting it, and I hope that we are using that money to support the health department and the sanitation department do their job. And the only, I just want to say one more thing, which is, the Parking Authority does an amazing job. They go down Garden Street starting at 2:03 on Mondays, 2:03 on Tuesdays, they don't miss They don't miss a beat. They hold every single person in this town accountable for everything that they do. Let's make every department like the parking authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexandra Black?
Alex Black, 1307 Garden again. So I want to thanks, first thank Councilperson Russo and Councilperson Ramos regarding the amendment to remove the parking decking from parklets so they are able to clean properly.
Alex, can you come a little closer to the microphone or speak into it?
Okay, can you hear me now?
That's better, yep, thank you.
So thanks for that. I did hear two council people not wanting to move forward with this. And it's funny because I watched the September 20th, 2023, there was a council meeting and Councilman Quinteros and Councilman Cohen both said that this was adequate for what's under the parklets and that we would keep watching. So it's been, yeah, you said we'll keep watching to see how the outdoor dining ordinance would work out. So it's been a year and five months since we've been watching and we're watching a lot of rats. I'm not picking on the parklets. It's bigger than that, it's garbage collection, which, by the way, is there another public portion after this or is it?
No, this is it.
Got it. Okay, didn't know that. I had another thing, okay. Councilperson Quinteros, you said it was draconian for us to just get this cleaned out. I don't think that's draconian at all. I feel like these are permanent structures that need to be cleaned. Restaurants are our neighbors and we expect all our neighbors to work with us and help us eradicate this problem. I think this ordinance is a good compromise. Restaurants get to serve the patrons outdoors. The only difference is that it will be clean. And I think every restaurant owner should support that. And I know it's not a back and forth, but at some point I'd like to know why you voted no on the ordinance. I'm saying this now because I received this picture from, not my ward, not someone that knew I was coming to speak. This is Brant School, 4:27 PM, garbage outside. Not picking on any specific restaurant because I don't know if that's our garbage, but this is just Washington Street. This is the alley for Barbès that they were saying that people go and go through the garbage. This is not people, it's not wackos, this is rats that are going through the bag and opening and taking avocado pits. This is what we found in the past around Barbès. This is 14th Street. It's not just, like I said, it's not just a restaurant, it's different violations that are contributing to the problem, but the parklets and not being able to clean under this is a big problem. What else? Like we said, we saw this. I have many more pictures that I've been sending you guys pretty much on the daily. Some of you are not on the email, but I would hope that this ordinance is something that everyone could come and try and help us eradicate the rats because it's, I just don't see why anyone would be against clean streets. So I'm specifically speaking to Councilman Quinteros and Councilman Cohen. So I would like, if you can't answer now, maybe an email or let me know exactly why you're not voting for this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Black? Jill Singleton?
I'd also like to thank both Councilwoman Russo, Councilwoman Ramos and also Councilwoman Fisher for all the work that you've done. We really appreciate the reach outs. We're feeling hopeful, we're feeling like we are making some progress in this situation. I too watched that video of the meeting in September 2023. I thought there was some really good discussion about whether or not the regulations that you know, you all decided upon struck the right balance. And at that point, the feeling was that they did. They were neither to quote draconian, they depended on sort of the common sense, I think that was the word that was used or the phrase that was used of the restaurant owner to really kind of monitor themselves and their own parklets. And I think that that's worked with varying degrees, but I think I'm so glad that this ordinance has passed for first reading because I think it really deserves a serious look because I don't think it's happening in all places. It was also mentioned that some kind of filler needed to take place for the gaps underneath so that the rodents wouldn't be able to harbor there. We know that hasn't taken place in many of the parklets. Personally, I don't see why we couldn't even go to streeteries, that's a whole other issue. We could accomplish the same thing. I'm really not clear on how it is that we're comfortable with our streets not being cleaned for years on end underneath those parklets. So I really hope that this issue gets a serious look and that there is a way to power wash under those things, just like our streets are cleaned. As Batia said, we have a great, you know, those two trucks are always in tandem, the street cleaning truck and the cushman. People know if you leave your car there, you are going to get a ticket. It works and then people then adjust their behavior accordingly. We've made these containerization rules, but we haven't had the enforcement, so we haven't changed the mindset nor the behavior of people. Going around this city and especially in our neighborhood for sure, at any time of the night or day, it's absolutely appalling to see how much garbage there is, just overflowing. I mean, the idea of a lid or it being contained is actually a joke. I mean, you really have to go and see it if you haven't seen it for yourself. I know Councilwoman Fisher, we did a walk around and you got to see it for yourself and it was really plain as day. The other thing that I really want to just talk about briefly is the importance of education about this. You know that the only city on the planet Earth that is truly considered to be rat free is Alberta, Canada, outside of Antarctica and a few isolated islands. They are the only city that for 70 years has actually been able to achieve that status. And the reason they've been able to do that is they're committed to it, they're very serious about it. If you look at their campaign, their informational campaign, it's downright scary. Look up some of their posters, they actually use dead rats to bring to people and show them and really put the problem front and center. We need posters, we need signage, we need social media, we need mailings going home, we need to be using our Nixal alerts, we need to educate people about the fact that garbage equals rats and that we have rats in this city. We need to educate them about the fact that two rats, one breeding pair equals 2,000 rats in one year. That same breeding pair is thought to be able to have half a billion descendants in three years. We've had this problem for a very serious long time. Rats also live within 100 feet, between 25 and 100 feet of their food source, they're garbage. So they're right there, they just go from here to there to sleep eat, sleep eat, sleep eat. And we are just absolutely running a rat nutrition program here. That's what we are doing with this garbage and we have to do something about it. So I really hope that we take a serious look at this between now and that second read, that we figure out a way to educate people because the only way we're going to be able to fix this problem is by committing to it, to have strong decisive leadership, I love hearing that phrase, thank you very much, with education, inspection, oversight and enforcement. We have to do this. A city that can't even control its own garbage cannot achieve half of the things we have on our agenda at any given council meeting. Please, I beg you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Manuel Rivera Soler?
Manuel Rivera Soler, buenas noches a todos y a todas. Thank you, Council President, good evening. Council President, Council Vice President, Council members of the public, thank you very much for your presence here this evening. I would like to say thank you again to you all for taking the opportunity to ask questions on tonight's agenda. It does the public a great service when you discuss and you give your opinions, the reasons why you're voting for something and why you're not voting for something. And that is what democracy looked like. And I appreciate again everyone who participated, all of you this evening and again, as well as the members of the public who are here this evening and last meeting, who asked pertinent questions, who kept one after the other, asking similar questions in regards as this evening for the rat situation. We appreciate them and I would like members of the public to understand that I appreciate them as well as a resident and a member of the public and a member of, resident, pardon me, of the sixth ward who doesn't have direct representation here this evening because of the vacancy, as well as I would like to also, but I will save it for another day, understand the composition of this council. I was aware that you were going to power share, but I guess that was thrown out the window. But no offense to you, Council President, you are very fair. But with that, Council President, I will say this before my time runs out. I quote, or quote, "We must accept finite disappointments, but we never, but never lose infinite hope." Quote Dr. Martin Luther King. I say these words not just because of a government or circumstance, I say it profoundly because I feel pain, I feel sadness in my heart and this is not the reason I usually come up to speak. But tonight I will take a moment and apart, take this two minutes that are left, to say the name of a beloved brother, a friend, Hobokenite through and through. My beloved brother, whose name will now forever be enshrined in this council's records and in the cities, his name is Jose Antonio Rivera Soler, a resident of 221 Jackson as well as 529 Park Avenue. Again, a Hobokenite through and through, with faults, but a good man. I thank you all, all those who sent their message of condolences to my person as well as my family, those who made the effort to stand with us, to join us and give us strength. I thank you all for that, all of you who also reached out, whether it be online or with your presence. I thank you all. I would also like to take the opportunity to thank the day my brother needed them most. The Hoboken Fire Department, the EMT workers, the paramedics, the police officers were there. So when you had the discussion this evening about the police, the firefighters and the chief of police, it touched me because I saw their work. I saw how selfless they are. They rescued my brother, they took him to the hospital as quickly as possible. So to them, I owe a debt of thanks. I will never forget them, especially the police officers. Thank you all. Once again, thank you, Council President, for allowing me to say my brother's name and to all of you again and to all the members of the public. Thank you. And God bless you and God bless Hoboken.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera Soler. Owen Finnegan?
Hello, council members. My name is Owen Finnegan and I didn't prepare any notes, but I just want to mention that I do own a parklet and I believe I was here 14, 15 months ago on same issues. And how did we get, how did we resolve those issues was by putting in, you know, panels with removable decking. And I did that. So I'm just kind of confused as to like, if I could get some answers while I'm here instead of me talking about, like I would like some answers to my questions, like what different do I need to do now? Like what is, what do you propose and has somewhere else done it so I can like maybe have my contractors look at what you plan for me to do? If you follow me, can I get an answer or?
Well, this really isn't a back and forth.
Oh, sorry, okay.
You can pose the question.
So basically, so basically, I guess I'm just saying that I put on, I put in all these, you know, things that you needed me to put in place. I put in various like panels that opens up and I power wash every week. And so basically, I just, I guess I'm confused as to what's going to be new, what's coming down the road and like if there's something coming down the road, definitely going to be need for like somewhere else so we can, something that was done elsewhere so we can base it off and tell our contractors or whoever it is that we need to like look at that model to see what you guys want us to do. Because the last time I was here, I did everything you guys wanted me to do. So now we're doing it again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Finnegan. There are no more speakers for the public portion?
Anthony, you know?
Okay.
Hope all is well.
Identify yourself for the record.
Sure, yep, Anthony Pino, Anthony David's been 14 Hoboken.
Yep.
Hello, everybody, my neighbors. Hi, everybody. Hi, 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 everybody. And I get it, like we're under a scrutiny of, you know, rodents, right? So I think we all need to.
The rodents are under the scrutiny of us.
Yes, yes. I feel like Billy Joel here. Anyway, I think obviously we need to work together with both sides. I also live in the community. I haven't seen many compared to where my neighbors live, but I do think there's an opportunity where the restaurant community and the neighbors can come together to make the proper adjustments that can work for everybody. And I had some conversations with the HBA today and it is not just parklets from Joe. I walk down the street, I also see trash, early, late, uncleanly sidewalks, grease dirt on the corners where the trash goes, where we have the bins. More people, more trash. Downtown, yes, but as you go up towards the midtown and uptown areas, you do see restaurants in front of the, whether they have a parklet or not, you still see grease debris, trash on the sidewalks. That all needs to change. With those actions of being, for myself, I take pride in my restaurant as it needs to be cleaned at all the times because that's the first appearance. When you walk into a restaurant, bathrooms are clean, you know things are clean. When the bathroom is not clean, that just kind of shows you where they are. I think the restaurant community needs to do a better part, but then obviously just trash pickup, maintenance, stuff of that sort, it all needs to be done, but it kind of needs a nice big degreaser of everything and start fresh. Obviously, it's very cold right now, so that's not happening. And I think there's an opportunity to get back to the table where we were talking before about what can we do together, then obviously, obviously more important things kind of come up and it goes to the wayside and unfortunately we had, you know, other things happen. I'd love to come back to the table and help advocate for both sides, right, where we can make it work for everybody. We employ people, a lot of people, almost 100 between our both restaurants. That parklet is important to us. Even two Sundays ago when it was 40 degrees, you know, we sat 150 people outside that Sunday. That's a lot of revenue for my staff and to make money, but it's also the money that we need to keep running it and operating. So I hope we can work together to make the right adjustments that work. And for those people who can't abide by it, then you need to go. If you can't maintain your parklet where it should be and follow the proper procedures, then you lose out. You lose out on the benefit of having one and having the opportunity to do those things. So, but I appreciate the opportunity to talk and I look forward to meeting and discussing next steps to prepare for the spring because it's going to be here before you know it and make sure things are working in the right direction, just not with the parklets, but on the maintenance of the streets, sidewalks, trash and so on. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Pino. Okay, now there's no longer, no other members of the public?
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have one matter and new business and we have an emergency resolution for the addition of an urgent item to the agenda. The, I need my glasses. This pertains to the Elcor building at the bottom of the commercial, excuse me, the residential building. There's the need, the State of New Jersey Economic Development Agency has a deadline which has been extended three times to today. If you could please depart quietly, we'd appreciate it. And so the resolution to consider the emergency resolution so that we can consider. And so the resolution to consider, the emergency resolution, so that we can consider this, which is, it's authorizing the mayor to sign a community benefit agreement, which is not changing at all as far as substantively, we approved it in October already. And there is also a parallel agreement, which just confirms that it's consistent with the redevelopment plan and agreement, the change.
Vote together?
Both together. If, any questions?
I just would add, I think the deadline for this agreement is today. So that's why this is an emergency.
I think the mayor's signing it tonight, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're not getting paid overtime, Jason. You're not getting paid overtime to get this out.
I was hoping we were going to go to 11:00 today.
Okay, so, Mr. Freenough, call the vote?
NV1 and NV2. Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Anything else in new business?
Oh, can I go? Yeah. Just because it's our last meeting before the PATH closure. The PATH is closing at midnight on January 30th. The, I think there's been a lot of communication out there, there's going to be extra 126 buses, 24/7 shuttle to the PATH stations in Jersey City. And importantly, New York Waterway is cross honoring PATH tickets. That's actually available for everyone, anyone at all who takes the ferry today, or potentially takes the PATH and now is going to need to take the ferry. A $3 ticket is available. Normally, these tickets are $10, so it's a 70% savings for three weeks. It's a two-part process, you have to go onto New York Waterway's app and acquire a special $3 ferry ticket, but you also have to have either a MetroCard, SmartLink card, or download an online digital pass from Port Authority. So you need both those things, but if you take the time to do that, you will only have to pay $3 for the ferry from now until the 25th. And then, second and related, the 15th Street closure will come to an end the day before the PATH closes, so we'll at least see some positive traffic flow on the North End. Thanks.
Just a second. Councilwoman Fisher, are you sure it's not closed on the 30th, and it's closing at, is it closing at 12:01 AM on the 30th?
It's closing at, on the 31st, at midnight between the 30th and the 31st, so the day of the 31st, it will be closed all day.
So the 31st is fine, which is a Thursday.
Is closed, yes.
The 30th is open.
30th is open, sorry. Yep, 30th is open, 31st through, through the 24th, opening on the 25th.
Yep, thank you. Councilwoman Russo?
Just quickly, and most people left already, so not going to get into all the changes for that parklet ordinance, but Councilman Ramos and I have already been discussing some times where we're going to reach out to some of the owners, and then we'll take it at the next meeting. So I appreciate that.
That's great. So I didn't want to put you on the spot, but I'm glad you're going to reach out.
Are you talking or not? Okay. But it will likely go back to first reading after those changes.
If there's changes, yeah.
Right.
If there's changes.
I think we'll see changes, it'll probably go back to first reading.
Okay.
Motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.